Another meeting of the Berkeley Planning Commission, today is Tuesday, March 23rd, and in accordance with adaptive legislation and the current state of emergency, this meeting is being conducted virtually via Zoom. Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the flag for which it stands. One nation.
Indivisible.
With liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Aaron, could you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Bardis?
Here in Berkeley.
Commissioner Dolan?
Here, Berkeley.
Commissioner Kempner?
Here in Berkeley.
Commissioner Patterson?
Here, Berkeley.
Commissioner Richardson?
Here at Berkeley.
Commissioner Smith? Commissioner Stern? Commissioner Trotto?
Here, Berkeley.
Here, Kepelansky?
Here in Berkeley.
Next up, we have approval of the agenda. Does anyone have any changes to the agenda? Or motions to approve?
Motion to approve.
Aaron, could you call the roll?
Dolan?
Yes.
Kempner?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Trotto?
Yes.
Bardis?
Yes.
Kepelansky?
Yes. Okay, that brings us to two sets of minutes. We have minutes from February, the February 23rd, regular Planning Commission meeting. Any changes to those from anyone? Or motions to approve?
Motion to approve.
Hey, Aaron, could you call the roll?
Kempner?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Trotto?
Yes.
Bardis?
Yes.
Dolan?
Yes.
Kepelansky?
Yes. All right, next up are the March 2nd work session minutes. Any changes or motions for those?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Aaron, could you call the roll?
Patterson?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Trotto?
Yes.
Bardis?
Yes.
Dolan?
Yes.
Kempner?
Yes.
Kepelansky?
Yeah. Do we have any communications this evening?
I have not received any, no.
Okay. So that leads us to citizen comment. If there are any members of the public who wish to speak during the appropriate agenda item, we ask you to please use the raise your hand feature or dial star nine if you've called in. Comments can also be submitted to planning@berkleymish.net. A reminder that the Planning Commission will not engage you in any discussion. We ask you to state your name and address and keep your comments to three minutes or less. Is there anyone on the call who would like to comment on an item that's not on the agenda? I don't see anyone. Is that correct?
That is correct, Aaron.
And we have not received any emails either, correct, Aaron?
Correct.
Okay, then I will go ahead and close citizen comment. And we will move on to our first agenda item, which is the Capital Improvement Plan.
Yes, thank you, everyone. So this item comes to you from the city manager. As you know, every year, it's up to the Planning Commission to make a recommendation to the Capital Improvement Plan, which serves as the city's multi-year planning investment or instrument used to identify the priority needs and financing sources for public infrastructure projects. So the city manager is here to discuss the draft plan or the draft Capital Improvement Plan as presented. This will come back to you in April for a recommendation to city council. So this is just your draft view, your beginning view, your first view, if you will, as the Planning Commission has requested in the past.
Thank you, Ms. Community Development Director, and I appreciate the opportunity to present this. I'm working on sharing my screen right now, so hopefully you all can see the Capital Improvements Plan. I know you received a copy of it earlier yesterday, so I do apologize. This time of year, we scramble frantically to try to take our inputs from all the appropriate departments. You'll see how many inputs those are in just a moment. But I want to begin by saying a special thanks to Lloyd Fielder, who prioritizes this every year, makes sure this is one of the first things that gets a more completed draft than many of our other sections, knowing that the Planning Commission requested a couple years ago to begin seeing this in March, a whole month advance of the actual request for approval that'll come in April. So it is important to emphasize the draft nature of this. We'll spend the next four weeks honing it, applying it to the revenues that we have available. This year has particularly been difficult to nail down what our projected revenues look like. Certainly, the long effects of the COVID pandemic are going to be felt in municipal budgets here in Michigan and across the country for multiple years to come. So any portion of this would be subject to change, but I think it's a very good suggestion that Planning Commission made as far as having a conversation for it. In the version that I'm sharing this evening, I've highlighted specifically the spending items that we're looking at for the upcoming fiscal year. But this is a multi-year document. We plan all the way out to, as you'll hopefully can see, all the way through the fiscal year '27 and '28, which will take us to June 30th, 2028. So always seems like a long way away until we wake up 10 years later and go, wow, that was fast. So it's an important planning tool, to say the least. In total, this year, what we're proposing is about $7.5 million in investments throughout the community through various departments. And total for the document being presented this evening is about $44 million. So that's how, again, you'll see very clearly how we intend to make Berkeley a better place to live, make sure our departments have the resources needed to keep up with the demand of whatever service they provide so well. So that's a little bit of framework. We can go through this item by item now. Let me move my little view disc over here. Like I said, I would like to, for the purposes of this evening, take you through what the most immediate year looks like. But you'll see, I'll be noting throughout some of our multi-face plans that you'll see are very clearly being executed as we move forward here. Moving down first, we'll start with the Recreation Department on page one. In the upcoming '21-'22 fiscal year, which will begin July 1st of this year and run through June 30th of 2022, you'll see in the course of this, we're looking at some playground equipment for our parks, specifically, as you see, the Oxford Park, Oxford slash Merchant Park, as it's currently called now. We'll see a $90,000 investment there for playground equipment, as well as picnic tables, umbrellas, and things that make the park a little bit nicer to enjoy, not only for the kids, but for the parents as well, and anybody else that wants to just go there on a pleasant day and maybe get some work done. We're looking at Wi-Fi in that space as well, so it could be a nice workspace for Berkeley residents of all ages.
Matt, I have a question on that. Is that in addition to the $1 million we're spending on there already? I thought the $1 million for the equipment was already included in that.
Correct. So there's going to be some continued investment. So over the course of, this is going to span more than one budget year, because again, like I say, our turnover is June 30th. So in the course of fully completing that space, we'll have some additional investment. But it certainly, you're right, it's pales in comparison to the investment we've already made in the quality of life in that area.
Well, I'm just concerned you're spending another $140,000 on the same park. You just spent $900,000 out, which was by far way over budget in general. So is this going to be $90,000 or is it $180,000, like a lot of the other stuff going out of this park?
No, you're, both are correct. It's, we've said, we've made a substantial investment so far. It did, you're correct that trying to do this in the middle of a pandemic potentially drove up some of those costs, but there are still some additional work to be done.
That's not that big of a cost, Matt, but I'm just saying that right now, we spend over $900,000. Is this in addition to that $900,000 or is it private?
No, it'll be in addition to it, but we'll have to show it in the subsequent fiscal year, because not all of it will be allotted in the time that we have here now. So basically, this is the remainder of some of those cost projections, but we won't take delivery of some of those items until after the new fiscal year, so we're going to have to show it in the upcoming one.
Okay, so you're saying that our $900,000 splash pad is now a million five, million?
Well, Mr. Trotto, I'm going to correct you right there, because that's a mischaracterization of that. The $900,000 project encapsulates the entirety of the park. So this is not just a specific, it's not a $900,000 splash pad. This is an entire park that we've redone and our largest one in the entire community.
I'm not denying that. I'm just concerned because it's been substantially over budget, which is a lot of stuff going on. So I just want to make sure the final number is going to be 900,000 or will be a million fifty?
We're probably over the million fifty number.
Okay. Good to know it's well controlled.
Sarcasm noted, sir. All right, moving on to Angel Park. Let's see, this is a joint park that we have with the school district, and so we'll have some new ball surface material there as well, in addition to some of the fence repairs. Anybody that kind of walks past that knows that there's some fence repairs that are needed there for quite a while, and that portion happens to fall on the city's section of Angel Park. So we'll be making some updates there as well. That'd be about, in total, say, a $25,000, $25,000 set of updates to Angel Park. Next up, we have our Oxford Towers Park, which is rebranded this year as, or renamed this year as Friends Park in honor of our Friends of Parks and Recreation, wonderful support group. We'll be doing some great work there to update the tennis courts, which are, we have in addition to those at Community Park as well. So about $80,000 investment in tennis. Tennis has just boomed over the last several years. It continues to be more and more popular every year, and we're happy to have another whole section of our tennis courts that are updated. As you probably recall, we resurfaced our existing ones, we resurfaced our ones at Community Park a couple of years ago. They look great. They continue to attract a ton of residents, private tutors, even the Berkeley Schools uses those for their teams as well. So we'll be happy to have an additional set of tennis courts that rival the quality of the ones we have at Community Park now. And saying, conversation about Community Park there, this is the one that we're going to be targeting this year for our five-year Parks and Recreation Plan, and just new equipment going in there, new playgrounds. It's going to be ropes-based, is what we're looking at right now, to help, it's going to be fun for more ages than what we currently, than the equipment that we have there now. So we'll be able to accommodate some older kids. It's certainly a popular destination for teenagers right after they get out of school, either at Anderson or at the high school. It's a fantastic collection point, so we're happy to provide some more inclusive, age-appropriate play for the kids that get the most use out of it right now. So it'd be a great little melding spot for children of all ages in the community. And then our community center, not.
Can I ask a quick question?
Certainly.
Um, our thought is the rope-based stuff, is that replacing or in addition to what's already there?
No, it'll be replacing the materials that are there now.
Okay.
Yep. Again, community center, $5,000 patchwork. This will be in the north side of the parking lot, not what we call the arena lot. Since the arena lot, you know, we don't know what we're doing with that over the next couple of years, but, you know, hopefully there's some more substantial updates to that space. But again, what we're talking about next year is making some updates to the parking lot, or the parking lot north of that building there. In total, it's a $410,000 investment in the Recreation Department across parks all across the community there. So again, excited to be investing in quality of life like this.
Matt, I have a couple more questions here. Seen in the newspaper that they're planning on redoing the, what's the park called? Bacon, not Bacon, Harvard, the top lot.
Top lot, yeah. That's in this budget year.
I don't see that listed on any of these.
Nope, that's in this budget year, Mr. Trotto. That's going to happen prior to, prior to the June 30th, end of fiscal year. City Council approved the updates at a meeting earlier this calendar year, so we're actually ready to start that come spring. Those will be wrapped up by the time we start talking about the '21-'22 fiscal year.
Just wanted to make sure it wasn't missed. And the other thing is, I don't see much money put into the community center. Are they not doing any repairs to that building?
Repairs don't rise to the level of Capital Improvements Plan, so that's, maintenance items don't end up falling into this list. These are our more substantial investments. Again, we tend to go about $5,000 over to put into this. Sometimes you'll see some of them a little bit lower, but it's typically in conjunction with or itemized part of a larger project. But yeah, general maintenance doesn't fall into the Capital Improvements Plan. You have a question before we move on to our library? Right, as you see from the listed items here, we'll have some repainting going on in the upcoming fiscal year, both exterior and interior painting. Mr. Church has got some beautiful upgrades as far as the aesthetics plan, so we're looking forward to that, and it's just nice to stay on these things, so you have a good weather barrier in the paint, as well as reupholstering chairs as well. So again, no one, single one of those would be, probably you would see on a Capital Improvements Plan, but if you take 14 of them together, we budgeted for about $6,000 for that. About a $22,000 investment for capital improvements in the library this year. Next up, our municipal building. Not only is this, talk about our building itself, but we tend to, this tends to be a catch-all for some general city projects as well. So wayfinding is going to happen throughout the city. That's something that was a joint project with the DDA, as you can see here. So this will be year two of the wayfinding. We'll have the first portion of it finished by the end of this fiscal year. We've already got some of the artwork finished, and we've got the materials for the signs themselves are being fabricated. You'll probably notice throughout the downtown district now that the bases have been poured and prepped and ready to go, so we're excited to have some forward progress on that project. And then we'll be finishing up the balance of those at the second half of the summer post-July of one. Next up, again, City Hall reconfiguration. This is something that we've discussed for a couple of years now. We have pushed this project more than once over the years, but anybody who has visited our City Hall knows that we've got the former court building, which has sat since 2015, largely unused, and there's some workflow reconfigurations that we like to do in order to get some adjacencies in our various departments that collaborate together on frequent occasion, as well as make some improvements to the general resident experience as they come in. Right now, like most think of our City Hall as a place where you come in, you pay your bill, you wave at somebody, and you leave. We'd like to provide some more community spaces for those and make some upgrades as well to our, to be a better use to our community as well, make it more of a hub than it currently is able to be used for now. So again, we've got a price for that as well at $450,000. This is one of those projects, though, that by the time we come back to you next month, you might find in a subsequent budget year. This is certainly a revenue-dependent project, we would say. Next item highlighted in green here as we move down is a parking lot at Cummings. May recall, the city ended up purchasing a home, the first home was south of 12 Mile on Cummings. Last year, the intent there was to add some additional parking in the West 12 area. Right now, we really don't have much past Tyler at all, so the publicly provided parking, we know, has a direct correlation to economic development, because it helps more businesses make better use and more efficient use of the parcels they have without having to provide parking specifically for their property on site. So we're excited about the development potential this could yield, but again, we would certainly put this in the category of a revenue-dependent project. And again, subsequent to that would be the demolition of the house that's on the property as well. So again, some projects that are certainly do apply to City Hall, but some, this category being a bit of a catch-all as well. So you see some investments in the greater community as well, at about a total of $1,012,500. Public Works always does the heaviest of the lifting on this particular plan, so you'll see there are a number of things in here. You'll see, one, I want a couple of highlights, as we're continuing to be excited about making investment in our road project. These are all voter-funded projects from the voter-approved millage back in 2018. You'll know that these projects are funded by this millage, because each one of them will have a sign next to them that thanking Berkeley voters for those updates. We're excited to move up, we had year one last year, we got about 80 good-sized projects done, and we're looking for another, I think, 75 or so this year. So we're, again, continuing to be excited about making those investments. I will note, I know I'm focusing on just the '21-'22 budget year, but we do anticipate, as you'll see from here, a consistent revenue source of about $1.1 million annually into Berkeley Roads, and again, all credit due to Berkeley voters on that. Next one down, water main projects, those that don't have roadwork associated with them. So this is going to be part of what we'll have to do annually, where city is under mandate by, as every other community in the state, to do everything in its power to reduce lead lines that are found connected to the city's water system. So these will be, each one of these water main projects will also have a component where we're removing all the lead lines that are attached to the water main in that project section. So again, this, not only is this going to be good for the city system as a whole, but have a benefit to the individual members that live along there. As much as we know as painted as it is to live through projects like this, if somebody does have a lead line, one of the benefits to them personally, to their household, will be that lead line being replaced by copper all the way up to their water meter inside their home. Again, that's state mandated. Again, we will have our sidewalk program as well. We've, we're in year two now. That sidewalk program with some projects launching this year. Again, council recently approved a vendor for that, so we're going through and getting all of our worst trip hazards now, and we'll continue to push through that for the next two years. By then, we should have made it all the way through the entirety of the city. That's two-inch gaps, two-inch lifts, all making the cities, the city streets and sidewalks form more walkable, and missing a general improvement. Again, we want to, the name of this game is continual investment. So after we made it all the way through and gotten what we feel is the worst, most immediate items, we'll be able to start right back over again and get the next level of items that need to be replaced as well. So it may not be two full inches, you know, raised or cracked, but if it's, you know, something less than that, and it's considered to be on the cusp or could potentially develop into a trip hazard, then we'll work with the homeowners and get those remedied as We continue to invest in our sewer lines as well. We've done a substantial portion now, I think we're above 30% at this point, of basically replacing our city sewer lines in place. So that is running a brand-new plastic pipe through the existing sewer pipe. They're clean, they're continuous, there's no snag points, there's no cracks, there's no areas where materials can get snagged and cause clogs. All of this goes towards helping our system work as efficiently as possible. That plus continual maintenance, cammering, cleaning, all good things for the city sewer lining program. And again, I want to note the sustained investment, we have planned for that, increasing over the years, 400,000 up to half a million. We want to make sure that we do, we've been doing about a mile a year, and we're, especially when we benchmark ourselves against our neighbors and communities across the state, we're very proud of that progress each and every year. Some other items in here, patchwork, concrete work, much smaller in scale than what, than the items I opened with, for sure, but as I said, on the aggregate, they all add up into investment of the city's infrastructure. Any question on those? I want to keep on scrolling down here.
Yeah, Matt, I have a couple of general questions that I hope you can answer succinctly.
Not my strong suit, but I'll try my best.
Okay. In terms of the roadwork funded by the millage, can you describe in general terms how those projects are prioritized?
Sure. So we use our process called, the acronym is Pacer, it's P-A-S-A-R, and I'm not recalling what that stands for, but it's an evaluation tool widely used by road engineers and our own DPW to evaluate the state of a road. What we looked at were areas that were, you know, sinking road depths, potentially areas that held water certainly longer than they should, but we also looked at areas where the Pacer rating is being impacted, moves down by maybe a letter points or a number points into a lower area, where if we were to notch out, say, a large section of it, not need to replace the whole road, but if we could notch out a large section that was damaged and replace that, then we can elevate the entire score of the road. So I know we looked at those and prioritized those as well. So we, I tell you, the first round of this was made somewhat easy, given the condition of our roads are in, so we do anticipate that being a little bit more difficult to prioritize as we go on, but we certainly made an effort to work in each and every section of the city this year, and, or each and every section of the city in the first two years. So we did clump them to a certain extent in year one, there'll be a clumping of projects in year two, just to make sure the mobilization costs remain low with our vendor. So I hope that helped. It was, try to get the worst of the worst and try to elevate the Pacer scores as, for the road system as a whole.
Yeah, I use a different kind of Pacer, not that one, but anyway. My second general question is, in general terms, what's the relationship between these projections in the Capital Improvement Plan and the yearly budget-making process? In other words, if your, if your plan calls for spending $10,000 next fiscal year on sidewalk ramps, and you go to make the budget, how guided are you or how bound are you by the figure in the plan? Or can you just go and decide there and then how much you're going to spend?
We do update, we do update annually those figures, because sometimes projecting out even more than two or three years, sometimes those numbers don't hold up when it comes time to actually go out to bid or something like that. So we do update them on a, each year annually, but the projects that you find on here are ones that definitely need to be done, so even if we were to have to, like, push them back, one of the values of the CIP is, you go to, you say, okay, we need to push this back into a subsequent budget year, and then you start looking at it and you go, well, we already have a lot of items programmed for that year, so maybe let's find a way to either do a smaller scale, or maybe this spans multiple budget years to give us the opportunity to put away additional funds for it. But we, we very rarely look at something and say, all right, next year's going to be 10,000, and then the budget comes up and we go, we don't have $10,000, let's do it for seven, and just switch the number. We, this is a planning tool, and we try to be as accurate as we can on purpose, because otherwise, it just wouldn't be useful to us, frankly.
Okay, so it's guidance, and it's for comparative cost analysis?
Both are true. Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, third quick question. The recently passed legislation in Congress provides additional funding for cities. Has Berkeley made any estimate of how much money it might actually recover from that funding source?
We have received the congressional estimates, but the guidance from Treasury, even on a webinar today, was that those are really subject to change. So Congress rolled out sort of a baseline estimate it had for municipalities, but a couple of things it didn't do well is it didn't take into account all the various types of municipalities across the country. Like, it's not set up well for handling villages and townships in Michigan, so in fact, no villages are reflected in those estimates at all. So the guidance that we got from Treasury today was that, especially if you're in a township, you should be, expect that whatever the villages that are found within your township, they're going to get an allotment, so you should see that circle, that number. Uh, they're gonna get an allotment, so you should see that circle, that, that number start to fall. Uh, and then as we looked at it, there was a great mismatch in a lot of Michigan communities. Um, so you, like our neighbors, or you know, neighbors uh, to the north and east there, uh, and, and Royal Oak. They, their number vastly outpaced anybody else in the region. And there's not any real great explanations as to why that is. So uh, I, again, concise not being my strong suit, I say all that to say, we do have estimates, but we're also at the same time. We have national estimates, but we're told locally not to trust them just yet.
Okay, thanks. Thank you for answering those questions.
Certainly. Alright, I'm rolling, uh, scrolling back on through. Let's see, uh, one of the things I wanna highlight here is our DPW project. Or are we of our, we've been planning now for a couple of years to make some substantial improvements to our DPW yard. Uh, both in the interior offices, which have, we've really outgrown and are not suited for the technology. That, that department now relies on on a daily basis. Uh, we also have some, uh, we're gonna be expanding the, the DPW lot as well. Many, many years ago, we purchased a home that we previously been operating as a rental property. Uh, we have busted outside of our existing bounds to the point where we're planning to take that property down. Um, expand that lots, reorganize the, the flow within the yard. And then also add uh, updated technology to our security gate system, uh, and then work with our fuel management system as well. Uh, relocate our salt dome to an area that's a little bit more convenient. And, and as well as uh, make some up, upgrades to our uh, animal control facility as well. So um, we recently went out to bid for that. Uh, Mr. Trowell, you'll, you'll be pleasantly surprised to hear that uh, those bids did come in. Uh, as estimated, but the uh, we, we put a couple of extra things as well in to try to gauge what that number would be for budgeting purposes. And we're likewise just as happy uh, with the projected cost for those. And so we're looking at rolling this project, which was formerly in this budget year, we're looking to roll it over next year. And take advantage of um, uh, some better pricing, having a, a single vendor come in and work throughout the summer. On um, on making those improvements, stuff that we can't do ourselves within the department. So that's what you see, uh, an eight hundred and fifty thousand dollar investment in our DPW yard. Uh, if anybody who's familiar with that space and has uh, maybe had the chance to tour it. I think you'll be amazed at what that department does in the, in the area that they work out of. So um, sky's the limit when they get some updated areas here and they get a workflow that, that um, that really works well for a modern Department of Public Works. Uh, let's see, office renovations and stuff like that, again, included in that, that same project here. Uh, we'll have a upgrades to our two-way radio base station, uh, security improvements as well, uh, camera system throughout our DPW. Uh, it is worth noting that we house fuel services and uh, salt services for multiple jurisdictions. We work with um, Huntington Woods on some items, we work with the school district on some items. Uh, this is a fuel depot for uh, all the city fleets, or our uh, police vehicles coming in and out of that same area. Uh, it's not watched twenty-four hours a day, but it is accessible for that entire time. So again, we'll be upgrading our security system as well. And I mentioned the uh, the bacon house, which sounds like a delicious place to live, but it's only because it fronts um, uh, the, the street bacon. So we'll be taking that down as part of our expansion as well. Um, couple other smaller projects, but in total, we're uh, projecting for a, about a five point five million dollar investment. In DPW, the wrote, the city's infrastructure, um, as well as some of our facilities uh, uh, next year. So again, all good things, all moving towards uh, making life in Berkeley that much better. Alright, moving down to public safety, um, for them, it's actually pretty standard year. Uh, outside of one project, and that is uh, we're looking at updating the HVAC system. Uh, for those at home not familiar with the acronym, that's your heating and uh, heating, ventilation and air conditioning. Uh, the building was built in nineteen eighty-eight, it's only had a couple of upgrades to its HVAC system in that time. Uh, so we are certainly due for uh, a new system, a, a new, a new, new unit to service that building. Uh, we'll be able to make some, uh, certainly some energy efficiency upgrades there. The one we have is not um, as you can imagine by its age, it's not as efficient as modern units. So we'll be able to make an upgrade into the high ninety, ninety percents as far as uh, efficiency for that. So we're again, excited about that. After that, uh, we'll have some door card entry systems, uh, a couple of fuel, a fuel control system. Door control system for the jail and lobby, uh, then upgrades to our radio system, which is a part of a countywide project as well. So um, obviously the, the elephant in the room, the, the biggest project is HVAC. Uh, but it's about a three hundred and ninety-five thousand dollar investments in public safety this year. What, uh, I'll, we'll know their big year was last year, certainly. They uh, fire hall expansion as well as the, the uh, ladder four uh, fire truck. That, that was delivered this uh, last budget year, uh, both substantial leaps forward in uh, that department's capacity.
Hey Matt?
Sure.
When they do this, are they taking into account the current energy standards that are before by the environmental committee for the HVAC stuff?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yep. In fact, uh, one of our, one of the uh, recommendations in our uh, energy plan has been to develop a energy revolving loan fund. Uh, which would potentially find its uh, seed money in uh, projects like this. So we would take the efficiency, the dollars not spent on, on an HVAC system. Or you know, our utility bills and things like that, start to dedicate those to an, an existing fund. That fund goes on to seed additional efficiency projects, which then go, uh, and those dollars are, then go into. Um, that same fund, so it just, it becomes a perpetual source for making energy upgrade projects. So uh, uh, it's been utilized and, and a ton of municipalities across the state. And we're excited, um, we're at the forefront of, of jumping those, uh, jumping off on that, uh, hopefully in the next couple of years. Alright, and the, the last item that we have for the department here, um, our department, our downtown development authority. Uh, again, not strictly speaking, a, a, a department of the city. But um, their budget is approved jointly by their board as well as the city council. So we include them in our capital improvement projections as well. Um, just like you saw uh, higher up in this, there, there'll be doing phase year two of the wayfinding signage as well. Uh, we're splitting costs between the general fund and the uh, tech, tech increment financing capture. Uh, they also have projected streetscape improvements, uh, about thirty thousand dollars a year. Right now, their plan is to make that a um, a, a standing number year over year. So things like benches, uh, trash receptacles, uh, other streetscape features. Uh, again, just whatever comes up that needs to be replaced or updated, hopefully poles. Uh, potentially even, you know, uh, different types of um, seating areas, things like that. Um, tho- those will be uh, pulled from the streetscape. Um, fund here. And they likewise have a, have a master plan for their downtown area. That's gonna roll up into the community's master plan as a whole. And it recommends sustained investment in the streetscape features. Uh, in, in the years past, we've had some items that have been able to chip or crack or, or rust. Um, that, obviously the goal is to, to not be in that position again. Uh, last but not least, streetscape facade improvement incentive program. This is a unique one because it's not actually something that would be owned by the city or the DDA in the future. But again, because of the, the investment that they're making, we like to reflect it in this plan. Uh, this is the, the program at which an existing business or property owner would um, come before the DDA. They say, hey, we'd like to do this to our facade, and they say, sounds great, we'll fund, we'll fund it at uh, up to two thousand dollars. Uh, your, your next step is go to the planning commission to get uh, that approved. And then as soon as you implement it, again, turn over receipts and we'll give you a reimbursement up to, right now at the levels, I think it's two thousand dollars. So uh, this is a way that we, we keep Berkeley looking beautiful, both in the streetscape, uh, and the, the item before. As well as um, the look and overall aesthetic of our businesses. So all good things there as well. Uh, the investment rate uh, for the DDA totals, as you see, a hundred thousand dollars. Uh, all told, that's how we get to our seven thousand five hundred and seven thousand, seven million five hundred and twenty-nine thousand and five hundred dollars. For uh, next year's uh, budgetary investments in the community. And I apologize, I know you guys have been out of here in like a half an hour the last two uh, months. So and my presentation alone is probably that long, so again, I apologize for blowing your average this year.
Um, man, I got two questions. Um, seeing thirteen million dollars coming up in the next three years for streetscape approval, what's the plan for that? They're too.
Uh, that's a holdover from, that's why it's highlighted in yellow. Uh, we had some of the same, we had some of the same questions. That's a holdover, I think, from a projection that a previous director had. Um, so what, one thing that's gonna go back to our um, the DDAs, I'm sorry, DDAs organizational committee. Is to ask if, if there are some additional plans there or not, or if those need to be removed. And some subsequent numbers we need to be added uh, per the five-year downtown plan. Which honestly is the most likely course of action here. Uh, but they're, they're highlighted to call attention to it for the uh, for the, for an additional review.
Alright, my, my second question was, how does this compare to the actual cost of last year? In accounting from last year's cost, last year's capital improvements, or to be fair, are we plus minus, good, bad? Is it accounting for this in comparison?
Yeah, I don't have, because some of these uh, projects are so need specific, I don't have a compare, we don't really typically compare from year to year. Uh, so I, I apologize, I don't have that number, but I'm making a note as we speak to have that for you in April.
Okay.
Does anyone have any other questions on the CIP? Okay, if not, thank you Matt for presenting this.
I, actually I do, could, could I ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, um. You know, I, I guess in my own mind, there are. Two different kinds of expenses reflected in this, or expenditures, I think is a better word than expense. Um, uh, there, there are. You know, the, the, the expense of uh. Maintaining and replacing the, the, the city's. Uh, major physical assets, uh, the buildings, the streets and so on and so forth. And that, there's also the, the expense of upgrading. Um, uh, we see some of that in the uh, in the wayfinding uh, expenditure. And um, uh, can, can you describe how? Projects that are developed by. Uh. Entities like, oh, for example, um. Uh, you know, the environmental committee or the downtown development authority, uh, or the parks and recs advisory committee. Uh, you know, ideas that are generated with those bodies actually um. Come to be in the plan? I mean, it, does it, is it really city council that, that filters these ideas? Uh, and, and, and uh, is responsible for getting things in the plan?
Uh, it's actually a pretty collaborative process, so a lot of those things get filtered up through departments. Because uh, most of those bodies have a staff liaison that works with them. Uh, it's, you know, typically it's a department head. Uh, so they would take those plans and projections for multi-year investments or, or uh, whatnot. And they would start to incorporate that into their departmental budgets. Uh, and then the department, and then that would go to finance as a part of their departmental projections. Uh, that's certainly one way it happens. The same could be true as well for um, say the council liaisons. They're, they're the ones that report back to the council as a whole to say, um, the department I, or the, the board or commission. Or committee that I work with, uh, would like to spend X amount of dollars over this amount of years. Um, then that could also end up being, but uh, requested amongst council in the course of the regular budget action as well. Um, but typically one or, one of those two routes i- is the way that um, the draft budget starts to come together. During the planning process.
The reason I'm asking that question is because when the master plan, the update is finally adopted, it's, it's likely to have. A number of recommendations, and I'm, I'm just wondering how, wha- what role, you know. Those recommendations uh, play in developing the capital improvement plan, how, how that works. And I think maybe you've already partly described how that does work, but if you have anything else to, to say, I'd like to hear it.
Yeah, like I said, um, uh, we, we have precedent there. Um, the five-year recreation plan is guiding the, the multi-year investment in our parks now. Uh, that'll, that'll be uh, an appendice, it's passed on its own, but it'll also be uh, considered to be an appendix to the. Community master plan, the DDA's downtown master plan as well. Um, guides spending and investments for, for the course of its life as well. Um, though, depending on where the investment most closely aligns to from a department standpoint. You'll s- probably see it reflected there. Um, and if it doesn't fit anywhere very tightly. Uh, if it just seems like a community-wide benefit or something like that, uh, then you'll probably see it show up in the municipal uh, budget. If it's um, spans more than one department or etc, or has a wider benefit level. So again, i- it filters in from a number of different sources, but usually those come with, and I'm sure you guys will have this as well. Uh, an act, a task list, an action plan uh, with, with some dollars assigned to it. And we'll use that to develop this or our equipment replacement fund. Or some of our department uh, our policy investments as well.
Thanks.
Anyone else? I, I can't see the hands raised, um, since.
Well, I will end my share screen.
That's okay, that, thanks. Um, if anyone else has any questions, just feel free to jump in. Okay, I, I don't see or hear anyone. So thank you Matt, uh, we'll look forward to this at our April meeting.
Sure, thank you so much, thanks for the, the opportunity.
Yep, thanks.
Okay, um, so we'll move on in our agenda then, and the next thing up is a text, potential text amendment. To consider office uses in the downtown district. Aaron, do you wanna give us an intro on that?
Uh, yes, hello everyone. Um, so as you may recall, at the February twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one meeting. Uh, the planning commission reviewed a special land use request for a real estate office use on the first floor of the downtown district. Uh, located on Rubina, um, and after the required public hearing, the planning commission made the recommendation to city council. City council reviewed the request and your recommendation and approved uh, that uh, use at the March first meeting. During the course of our conversation, uh, and with the planning commission, it was mentioned that a review of permitted uses in the downtown district may be beneficial. Um, I've included this in the agenda to beginning to start this conversation. As well as the um, items from the, not only the master plan, but the downtown plan. Uh, that would support uh, looking at this uh, to allowing office uses on the first floor in the district. Um, I've reached out to the DDA specifically to see what uh, what their concerns may be. Um, as you know, the DDA executive director is out on maternity leave right now, so I did get to speak to a, a, a board member. Um, their response was that uh, they would be interested in discussing it. Um, but maybe with some limitations because they were concerned that too many offices on the first floor do not promote uh, foot traffic or any after-hours activity. And I gave you a couple of comparisons of, of other communities, specifically Claussen and Ferndale. Um, to show how they handle their uh, office uses on the first floor in their more robust downtown. So I did include a couple of next steps here on how we can move forward. Now, after we, after I submitted this and put this all together for your consideration, specifically for office uses. Um, I did review uh, or. Review a business license and, and have looks at the downtown plan and the current master plan. Uh, to see what other uses uh, we may want to discuss uh, promoting in the downtown district. And one of them that is supported both in the master plan and the downtown plan is artisanal art-based businesses. You know, tho- those ones that come, people come in for an activity, um, and they, they stay and linger. And they would promote so foot traffic not only for uh, restaurants and, and uh, local bars. But also uh, the, the retail aspect there as well. So I think it would be beneficial for us to, to look at what has already been done in the downtown plan. I don't foresee us making any changes to, to a text amendment that would be out of line with our um, drafting of our. Current master plan. Certainly, we're going to be continuing to allow those types of um, foot traffic, environmental. current master plan. Certainly, we're going to be continuing to allow those types of, um, foot traffic, environmental, I'm sorry, entertainment-type businesses. That's something that's come up quite frequently in all of the, uh, public engagement sessions that we've done, is people want somewhere to go in the downtown area. So, uh, or in the downtown district. So I think it would be a good idea to start working towards some of those things um, that have been identified in the downtown master plan that will align with how we're moving forward in the, uh, the current master plan. So, um, based on this memo, it would be, you know, office uses on the first floor, but also looking at, um, art-based artisanal-type businesses um, that, uh, could bring people in for entertainment-type, uh, activities. So, um, I don't have any draft language for you this evening. This was more to open the discussion. But I'd be happy to answer any questions and certainly take your direction to, uh, bring this back to you next month with something, either some more information or some draft language that we could then, uh, start to discuss.
Okay, thanks. So we have two things really that we're kind of talking about here. The office portion that we were starting to get into a couple of meetings ago, and the idea of maybe looking at the downtown uses as a whole and seeing if what's listed is still appropriate, or if it needs to be, in some cases, expanded. Okay. Who wants to start us off on this one?
I guess I can go.
Okay. Go ahead.
I, I kind of, um, appreciate DDA's concern of having all offices downtown. I, I would agree with them. I don't, I don't think that's the intent or our wishes, my wishes, to have it just office downtown. So I, I, I do appreciate their comment. I know that, um, she's out and things of that, but, um, you know, I think that's a good start as well for us. Um, and I'd be, you know, happy to expand what's allowed down there, um, after some review, of course.
Yeah, I would agree with Commissioner Patterson. I think there are offices that do create quite a bit of foot traffic. Medical and dental and things like that come to mind just off the top of my head, and it looked like some of the other communities considered those as principal. As well. Um, so I, I do think that there is appropriate types of offices that could be a first-floor use in the downtown district and still create the foot traffic that we're looking for.
Um, I, it comes to this scenario, though, I, I tell like the way that it's set up right now, where it's approved by the planning commission based on the process that we went through last time. I don't see any reason to change it. I mean, it doesn't come up all that often.
Well, what I can say is, you know, we do have, um, some uses that, uh, you know, in the, in the space of the last two months, there have been two applications that came forward for an office use on the first floor. One of them was the Rubina property that you reviewed. Another one was, uh, across the street, which coincidentally had special land use approval, uh, prior to. So, um, you know, they were able to, to reoccupy as an office use without having to go through additional approvals because the land has already been approved for that. Um, so in the space of two months, we did receive two, two applications for it, although one did not have to go for planning commission. It's just a matter of, of looking at, is that something we want to, to look at and review again?
So, when I was looking through, I went through the design guidelines again today, and I went through the downtown plan again today. Um, and, and the idea that I got is that, that, that downtown core areas, they've described it, um, is really supposed, we're supposed to be trying to preserve and expand retail and entertainment uses. Based on surveys and stuff like that with the, the steering committee for master plan, that's really been identified as what people feel are missing from our downtown is that, that retail and that entertainment. So I, I'm more apt to keep offices as a special land use so that we can kind of help uh, control, you know, that they're sprinkled around, and that we really focus more on, on those desired land uses for that.
Well, one follow-up to that idea, and I'm kind of playing devil's advocate here, Lisa, is, um, I, I get what you're saying, and I agree, the idea of limit, you wouldn't want a downtown that's all offices, right? Um, my concern is with the special land use, we have a certain set of criteria that we're looking at, and if it meets those criteria, we'd have to approve it. So we couldn't say, there's already five offices, here's the sixth office. Um, you know, that, that, that's not permitted now. We'd have to look, I think, at other amendments. If the goal is to limit the number of offices, then I think we'd have to go a different direction than a special land use. But I agree with your goal. I agree that, that, that you wouldn't want all offices. That sprinkled around is probably a better scenario than, you know, ninety percent office. I just don't know if a special land use is the way to do that. Does anyone have any other thoughts? Or Aaron, do you have any follow-up to, to any of the comments? I don't feel like we've given you very good direction.
No, I mean, I mean, I see that we're divided here. So, uh, at least the, the individuals who, who have spoken, um, there isn't a really good way to limit them, um, based on, other than, you know, requiring a special land use, where you're looking at each one individually, but certainly, uh, putting in the ordinance that you can only have five per block or five, you know, ten percent of the properties within a certain district can be office uses, that gets problematic, uh, especially for the sixth property or, uh, the one that wants to come in right next door, and everyone else has been approved, and now they, they can't. Um, so that, from my perspective, that's a hard one to, to justify and explain to, uh, a new business. So, um, from that aspect, it's, it's either we keep things the way they are with office use on the first floor as a special land use, or we look at opening it up to permitting it by right. Um, this was just a, to, the starting point to begin the conversation because it was expressed uh, at the previous meeting that it was something we wanted to look at.
So it may make sense, then, to, to look at all the uses, especially if we want to promote the entertainment. Make sure we included all of the types of uses that maybe weren't anticipated when the ordinance was originally written. So, I guess if you need specific direction, my vote would be, let's look at everything. Um, I don't know how the rest of the planning commission feels about that, or if they would prefer to hold off until the master plan is completed. Um, that's an option, too. We do have the downtown master plan that's already in place. Um, or someone in place, but I guess what's the feeling of the commission? Would you want to look, just continue to look and discuss specifically offices so that we can give Aaron very clear direction? And whether or not to open that up, or do you want to kind of look at all the uses? And do you want to do it now?
I'm more apt to look at all the uses. I think the downtown plan is kind of laid out how they would prefer the zoning to kind of start to look with the different character areas. And to me, it doesn't make sense to try and like go through that now and then look at, like, rezoning them, like, you know, rezoning those into the different character areas and then look at them again, or however we go about that. I feel like that should all kind of be one process.
Yeah, I agree with Lisa. It seems like we're putting a lot of work on Erin to get every single use that we think might want to go in there when the downtown districts are already kind of there for us, the guidelines are at least. I just don't want to put a lot of work on her. If we're, I mean, we, how many, how many offices are, I mean, there was two in two months, but how many have been over the last year? I mean, ballpark figure. Is it a lot even wanting to come, or are we just kind of doing this just because it was brought up?
We're doing this because it was brought up, and, and during the course of that and, and conversations with others, it, it was brought to our attention that, uh, the artisanal um, businesses and art-based businesses, uh, were supported by both the existing plan and the, the downtown plan as well as, um, certainly those that the entertainment-type, type businesses are, uh, what is wanted or needed in the, in the downtown district and certainly elsewhere in the community. So, um, given the fact that we were opening this up for the office uses, and there was interest to, to look at the artisanal arts-based business, it felt, it felt like a good time to talk about those, especially since there's support, uh, by those two plans that we have, we have right now. And certainly, uh, with the community engagement that we've had thus far, as I've mentioned, um, it's not, it's not going contradictory to, to those types of entertainment places.
So would it be easier?
Oh, sorry, Greg. Go ahead, finish up.
Sorry. So would it be easier just to add that line in our current way we do it then?
I'm, I'm not sure.
Add the, uh, art studio or whatever they call them, entertainment into the current ordinance or guidelines that we have?
Yeah, we can, we can certainly do that, absolutely. And that would be a, uh, an easier text amendment than, um, looking at everything comprehensively. Um.
Right, I just think, I mean, you, the list is pretty much endless, right? I mean, we could make a best list and then still have ten other things that could fall under the umbrella, I guess, so.
Mark, did you have some comments?
Yeah, um, how do you like the hand? I think that's the first time I've ever mastered that, that skill, that zoom skill. Anyway, um, what is an artisanal business? Is it retail, or is it, um, office? What, what categories fall in?
Yeah, it, it's, it's neither. It's not, uh, it's not retail, it's not, uh, it's an experience, right? So, um, think of something like, uh, painting with a twist, right? You go in, are you familiar with that type of, uh, uh, business, Mark?
Painting with a twist?
Yeah.
Is that sort of hands-on? Would you do it on a computer screen or something?
No, it's, it's, it's more of a, an activity-type, uh, venue where someone will, a group of people go in. I've never done it personally myself, but, um, they go in and they do, they do an art project, and there's, uh, someone leading the, the leading the class, uh, as it were, and kind of I'm sorry? Oh, I thought someone was sweating. Uh, it kind of directs you on how to create your, your picture. And so it, one, one week it's a frog, the next week it's a, uh, Monet, uh, a Monet picture, and the next week it's the Eiffel Tower, and the next week it's something. So, the whole group does something, and they're all slightly varied because everyone's personality is a little bit different in their, the way they anyway, it's a painting experience. And so they go in and do a, do an activity. That's my long-winded explanation, but it's not retail in the sense that you go in and you pick up a thing. It's, it's, you go in, you have, uh, an activity that you do and, and experience that you, you have with other people, friends, family, et cetera, and then, and then you go home. But it, it also doesn't fit into the same categories like a comedy club or a theater because you're, you're doing an activity and you're not being entertained by someone up on the, on the front.
Well, it, it seems to me it's kind of like a yoga studio or a dance studio or, um, something like that. Would that be a fair analogy? We already have those, uh.
I wouldn't put those in the same category. Um, but I see, I see where you're going with that, but, uh, I wouldn't put those in the same category.
So it's kind of like anticipate.
Yes.
That we already have, right?
Uh, I've never been into anticipate.
It is very similar.
Okay.
I've done both.
And we have one on Coolidge, that's just opening up to pin, pin.
Inspiration, yeah. Those are, those are like activity places, but again, they're, the, those are separate zoning districts, so they allow, uh, different things. And so with the, the notion that we want those types of businesses elsewhere, but our downtown where we, um, have the restaurants and have these little funky retails, but we don't have the option for, uh, these entertainment venues, um, that's what's noted in, as, as wanted in the master plan and all the community engagement sessions we've been doing. So it just broadens the, the area where these types of businesses could locate.
Yeah, I'll think about it. Thanks. Thank you.
Does that give you some direction, Aaron? It looks like we're willing to, to look at the entertainment things, maybe not as much um, support for looking at the offices, but i- it's worth a look.
Okay. Okay. Well, I'll put together some information about the artisanal art-based businesses and give you a little bit more direction, certainly, and, and do some, uh, comparing what other communities are doing. Uh, I know that the planning commission, commission likes to see those, so, uh, we can continue this discussion next month.
I have one more question. What do they consider office space? There's a lot of lawyers' offices, financial planning offices, and a couple of insurance offices. And those are technically office spaces, but they're up and down twelve mile. I mean, is that an issue?
Well, I mean, they, they are up and down, but I couldn't tell you right now when they were approved, and many of those businesses may have been there since uh, before the downtown district was, was, uh, had such stringent, uh, use categories.
I mean, and some of those actually bring people to the community, like the, you know, the financial planning until COVID, probably brought people there on a regular basis.
So, yeah, and that's why we're, that's why we're having this, this conversation about the office uses, is because it's a matter of, you know, yes, the, the office uses on the first floor can bring people in, um, but I understand, you know, you may not want that everywhere, but that's why we're having these conversations, is to see if we want to broaden the, the use categories to allow offices on the first floor instead of just by special land use. Now, I haven't, I've only had the two, the two inquiries in the downtown district since I've been here. Um, so it's not like, you know, we're getting sixteen applications a day, but, um, you know, there are a lot of vacant storefronts down there that may have put people off from locating in those areas. I don't know that for sure. I'm just, it's, it's a theory. So, if we were to open it up, um, and allow more uses down there, does that, uh, does that help and assist, uh, those storefronts from being, from being filled?
I mean, could we define it as something that brings people into the area? I mean, it, it's just an office space where people send their filing paperwork and do computer work, that's one thing. They actually have customers coming into the office space for one reason or another, be it an insurance thing or financial planning or something like that. How can we define something like that?
Well, I, I mean, you can, you can look at a lot of your uses, medical, dental, financial planning, insurance, that those would bring people in. However, if that's difficult to define and, and bringing people in because there may be a, a business model for, for a business that, um, they just want the storefront, they just need the, the square footage. They're not going to have, they're going to do all of their stuff online, or they go to meet people at their businesses or at their residence, and they don't necessarily have appointments in their, in their building. We can't then deny them a business license because you don't bring people into your building. That's.
That's what I was trying to work. How do we word something like that into our wording? Is that, if you, if it's something that brings people to the community as an office space, that's one thing. But if it's an office storefront, you're not bringing any paper, any items into it, then that's something we shouldn't allow. I mean, it's almost like on a per-needed basis. Kind of why it's kind of said we should still kind of keep it in the planning world.
Right, and I understand what you're saying, but putting that into an ordinance of you, you have an insurance agency where you only do house calls or business calls, and you don't have people coming into the community versus an insurance company that does, there's no way to differentiate between the two. I mean, we, you know, you can ask them, but you can't deny one and, and, and give one the other just because they're not bringing people in. That can't do that.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so we'll stay tuned for this one then.
Well, my hand.
I'm sorry, Mark, I missed that. Go ahead.
Um, so, um, this seems like, I, I know we had the discussion about not wanting to include everything, but my question is, um, are there businesses which are closely enough related or analogous to artisan, uh, uh, type business, uh, activities that, that we should also look at those? Uh, th- this kind of seems like a, a hobby for a certain subset of people to me. Uh, any allowed use, I think, should be a little bit broader.
Sure. And, and certainly, when I bring this back to you, you know, it'll be artisanal art-based businesses, and that's just kind of a catch-all that would include some of the following examples. You know, like, like a photography studio, for example, right? So, you know, if, if a photography studio wanted to come in, they bring people into the community, they, you know, that type of, uh, thing. But yes, leaving artisanal and art-based without some sort of definition, um, leads it far too open to interpretation. So there will be some, some guidelines or some um, examples to include, but not limited to, kind of thing.
Enough, thanks.
Is there any input from the DDA on this and how to word this?
Uh, we have not discussed wording or language with, with the DDA. Uh, this is a jumping off point to see how far we wanted to go. If we're ready to, um, have those discussions, the DDA will be consulted, absolutely. Uh, but this is more of a jumping off point as to whether or not we want to continue based on the, the direction, the goals, and the, uh, objectives from the master plan, the downtown plan.
Okay, anyone else? All right.
Okay, I will bring you some, some information and perhaps some draft language. Okay. I will bring you some, some information and perhaps some draft language or at least a jump, a further jumping off point next month.
Sounds good. All right. Now, now we have outdoor dining and that is currently a specially adused, correct? And we'd be looking at a potential amendment to take that out of the specially induced category.
Yes, and I'd like to reference my, my review letter on this. And this is really, again, just a, let's see where we land on this. Let's talk about it. Certainly the master plan and the downtown plan and everything we've been talking about in our current update recognizes wanting, you know, outdoor space, gathering space, public areas, nightlife, pedestrian-friendly oriented type of, of a city. So as we moved through the COVID pandemic and everything shut down, the DDA, the chamber and I and city staff, we all worked together to figure out ways to assist our local businesses, especially restaurants who were hurting and not able to open their doors at all or were severely limited by capacity and things of that nature. So, you know, we do have these temporary use, use resolutions that will allow them to open some outdoor dining areas, not only on, in private parking areas and municipal parking areas. But we did identify a couple of side streets, specifically Griffith. And then there were a couple of other ones, but they haven't been utilized or there was no expressed interest in for outdoor dining to continue for, for those local businesses. And as we move forwards, you know, it's a jumping off point to see if we want to make any kind of changes to our ordinance that would change the regulation for outdoor dining from a special land use to a principal permitted use. Now, many communities have, have this as a special land use. Woodward, I'm sorry, Ferndale, the Woodward properties do not require special land use for their outdoor dining along Woodward. Many of them do. I don't have a community comparison for you here. Excuse me. But it's something that we wanted to, if we wanted to look at further, I can bring the, some more details to you. But really this is a jumping off point to see if we want to try to make any of the temporary resolutions from council, a more permanent component of our zoning ordinance and make that, that outdoor dining area easier for, for our local businesses or keep things the way they are.
Okay.
I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Erin. Who wants to start on this one?
I will.
Go ahead, Lisa.
Um, yeah, I, I think that if, you know, reasonably regulated so that it's done responsibly, I think it's kind of silly that we keep it as a special land use. I think if there's the room and the desire and there, there's no reason it can't just be allowed by, right?
I agree. I could, I agree completely with Lisa.
This wouldn't like grandfather in the other businesses though, correct? Or open that up to them? I know there was some, I think it was before I came on commission, one restaurant on Woodward that I think there was heavy discussion about opening up their outdoor space. And more recently, the Green Lantern, I don't think I was on commission for them either, or they didn't come to us. But would that just allow them to now have outdoor dining or no? It would be only for new businesses?
So it would.
Go ahead.
It, it would be for any business. So if we change this to a principal permitted right, if somebody wanted to do an outdoor dining, similar to kind of how it's separated now, where in the Coolidge district, you can have a restaurant or bar, just not, just not the outdoor dining part unless by special land use. So this would put them both under the same principal permitted use category. And therefore the regulations or requirements that we could develop for outdoor dining in certain spaces would have to demonstrate that they have a certain area, that they meet a certain setback, that they, they do A, B, C, D and E in order to have the, the rights or the, the approval to have the outdoor dining space.
So I think it's part of, part of considering moving this into a principal permitted use category is that we would make sure we have all of the, as Lisa was saying, regulations in place that are reasonable to make sure that we're not going to run into any issues with find a sidewalk and things like that.
Yes.
Other comments on outdoor dining?
I had a question. Is like along Woodward and maybe I guess 12 mile, do the road commissioner, M dot, also have concerns about outdoor cafes if it's their right of way? That it also like infringes, can get near it, I guess?
Do you know how, how they view this?
That's a good question. Um, I haven't had any applications thus far for Woodward. And honestly, that you're the first community I've ever worked in that, that has an M dot controlled road. So that would be something that we would work on together. And if that was something the planning commission wanted to, to look forward, look, look toward, that would be kind of my next conversation is to see how we can, what their, what their requirements would be, certainly clearance and setbacks and things of that nature.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah. I guess if we allow it as a permitted, well, I forget the exact term, planned permitted use. Or I, I think like traffic safety concerns are probably anything along their roadway or may come up. And I assume if we allow it for a business, we have to make sure that we pass any bar that they have regarding, you know, right of way.
Oh, absolutely.
Now, is this just talking about, um, restaurants or what are, you know, dining on their property? Or is there areas that the city is still looking at? I mean, I know you identified some streets. Is there anything that the city is still thinking about? You know, would be ideal to try and close or anything like that for?
I mean, those are the conversations that we are, we could have. We, we don't have any currently to make anything permanent, just because that would take, there's a lot more engagement that comes along with that than just, we're thinking of doing this. So if we were to go down that road, there would be a lot more public engagement discussing it with the, certainly the business owners. And then especially the residents who would be impacted, impacted by that. We did that when we did the temporary closure at Griffith. Each time we extended or requested council to extend that resolution for the temporary closure, we contacted those property owners along that first block to get their sentiments on, on, on that. And in one of the surveys we did, we, you know, we wanted to make sure that they, that they were comfortable with this as much as possible. So it, it's something that we can, we can look to explore, but it, we don't have any immediate plans to, to make anything permanent.
How, so were the residents fairly, by and large, okay with, with that closure? Or were there any like pushback or issues with that?
Well, I mean, you know, we did, we sent out letters, we sent out surveys, one survey, when we were going to extend it past June, July. And, you know, there were a couple of people that said that they didn't particularly care for it. But overwhelmingly, most people were, were enthusiastic about it. They, they liked it. They felt that they were living on a quieter street. They liked being able to play out in the streets with their kids. Overall, we've, we've had some positive feedback. There, the surveys had an open-ended comment portion, and there were a couple of people that did note that they were interested in a permanent, permanent situation or even seasonal like that. But again, like I said, that takes a lot more than just a resolution by council. There's a lot more that goes involved with, with that. So the, the immediate future is not to, to make anything permanent. But, you know, that's not to say that we, we're not, we're not saying no to anything. But we want to look at everything before we, before we comment 100% on anything.
I have another question. I know this is labeled as outdoor dining for special land use. And you also, for the current ordinance regulation, it does list outdoor dining as permitted as an accessory use, a special land use approval in those districts. Now, was the adopted resolution more than just dining? And how, how does that play into this too?
Well, that outdoor, the outdoor dining, so the, the resolution that went before council, that's extended until September 30th, is for outdoor dining, outdoor sales and outdoor service areas. So when we looked at this, you know, there was special land use for outdoor uses and outdoor sales as accessory. Or, you know, outdoor sales in general needed a community, a community permit that went before council and things like that. So given that the, the capacity in the, the retail, in office uses, in hair salons, in gyms and certainly restaurants were at a capped capacity, we didn't want to just say, okay, dining can go out in the parking lots, but everything else is staying indoors. So we opened it up to allow for retail businesses to have carts and have tables out on their front to allow exercise facilities to have classes outdoors. Or, you know, any of those types of service industries that they wanted to, to use the outdoor space to get, to get more people to service more people, then they had that option. Not many people did. There was only one business outside of a restaurant that utilized that, that option. So it wasn't as, as, as popular or as coveted as, as we had originally anticipated. But it is there for any businesses who, who are interested.
And is the intention then though, what we want to maybe move forward with solely focused on dining or that these expanded uses?
Well, right now we're looking at just dining.
Just dining.
So, yeah, because the, the outdoor sales and service areas, those are more of a temporary thing. You're not looking to, to make anything waterproof or create an extra fixture out there. So those would be still under the umbrella of a community special event permit to do some sort of promotional thing for their business and.
Like sidewalk sales or something?
Sidewalk sales, things of that nature. Right. So for this discussion that I presented to you tonight is, is exclusively for the outdoor dining.
Okay. And one other question. Do you know, I'm not familiar with this, but like, does alcohol service play a factor into any of this? If, if, if establishment has, can serve indoors and now they can have dining outdoors, is it, is it, is the transaction just seamless like across the, the building to their new expanded area?
Well, they have to get that worked out with their insurance carrier and through the health department to serve things outdoors. Those are, those are approvals that we require for the temporary outdoor uses right now. So, but in terms of our regulations, it would be outdoor dining. And so whatever they're servicing, whether it's a little cafe that doesn't do alcohol or it's Green Lantern who does everything. So we're not separating the two. Birmingham, as I, as I noted in my email, they, they permit by outdoor, they require special land use for any eating establishment that sells alcoholic beverages on their premises. So they go a step further to, to regulate the types of uses that are, that go on in their city.
Okay. So it sounds like then Erin, that we're interested in maybe looking at this as a principal permitted use with some, some regulations and things to go along with that.
Absolutely.
Okay. So that brings us to liaison reports. Does anyone have anything to report this evening? I know the council looked at a couple of text amendments that we recently sent forward to second readings and also the business on Robina as well. Is that right, Erin?
Yep. So the text amendments for the text amendments that have gone through the planning commission most recently for, had the public hearings. Yep, they, they approved both of those and they they're, they're, they went through their second reading, so they're good. And the, the special land use on the Robina property, they, they agreed with the planning commission's recommendation and they did, did approve that use. So that business is up and running right now. They're, they're very excited.
Any other liaison reports?
From environmental, we didn't meet this month because we couldn't muster a quorum. So we will be meeting in, our next scheduled meeting is in May.
I did, I did attend the DDA meeting and we'll be honest, there wasn't much to talk about that came out of it.
Thank you for following, Matt.
I did go, I did listen to it. I'm trying to remember exactly what came across in the meeting. I get to say it wasn't, it really drew my attention, so.
Has anyone heard anything about the art fair that usually happens? I don't know if that's a DDA event or a city event. I think it's like in late June, July timeframe. No?
By, by this time, we usually get an invitation. We haven't got one, so I don't think we're gonna get one.
Okay.
I, I guess Berkeley Days has been canceled.
I saw that, yeah. Matt, did you have something on the art, the art fair?
Yes, ma'am chair, the, the Chamber of Commerce hosts the Art Bash and the Street Art Fest. They're looking at relocating those on the calendar to August and September.
Okay, thanks. I was just curious. Good to hear that that's still a possibility. Okay.
Then our steering for the master plan steering committee, I just wanted to remind everybody that our master plan open house is Thursday. So if you haven't registered, please go and register. So we kind of have an idea of how many facilitators we will need.
Thank you. That's a good reminder, Lisa. Okay. Any other commissioner comments for the evening? On motion?
Sorry, this is Marty. Sorry I was late.
No, it's okay. Thanks, Marty. Erin?
Yeah. So I just want to piggyback off of what Lisa said. So we're very excited about the virtual open house. So if you, if you're able to attend, please do so, register, but also make sure to alert your friends, family, neighbors. We really want to try to get as many people to this virtual open house as possible. Really excited about it. And the only other thing is we have the master plan workshop scheduled for next Tuesday. Is it next Tuesday? No, not next Tuesday, the Tuesday after that. I apologize. So the second Tuesday, first Tuesday of the month. So I look forward to seeing you all there for that. And we'll give you an update on, on the virtual open house.
Great, thanks. Any motions to adjourn then if we don't have any additional comments?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Erin, could you call the roll?
Richardson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Trotto?
Yes.
Bartis?
Yes.
Dolan?
Yes.
Kepner?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Kaplansky?
Yes. All right. Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Thank you very much.